Good morning, everyone. We're going to get this thing fired up. Here in a minute. Madam Clerk, everything, uh, systems online. We're ready to go. Okay. Hey, good morning, everybody. Today's Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. Time's 9:00 a.m. We're here for regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is invitation, uh, I believe Pastor, uh, Torres is, is not here yet. Nope. Mr. Fierro, would you do us the honor once again? I think this is the fifth time out of the last seven weeks, but we appreciate you.
He's always ready.
He's right. Prepared for this.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. Thank you. Now, let us pray. Dear God, thank you again for another day full of new opportunities to honor you and serve you, Lord. And we're just grateful for all the many gifts you have given us and the talents you've provided to us. And we just pray for our special blessing on our Board of Supers today, Lord, and, and all of those, uh, in Kings County. Especially lift up our military, our law enforcement, our firefighters, and all of our first responders. We ask for protection for them, and we just are grateful for your wisdom, Lord, your discernment, your guidance. And we just pray that you will bless this meeting. And thank you for your son, Jesus. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen, sir. Praise six. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, pledge. All right, next item is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Madam Clerk, do you have any speaker cards first?
I do. I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Cindy Craddock.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. In regards to the Corcoran Cemetery District, they've done a great job of starting with the gophers. It was a major mistake of letting them get out of control in the first place. Right now, besides the real mess, they pose a safety hazard with the unlevel ground, the holes that have caved in and sunk. Anndations to level and compact until the ground is compacted again as the gopher holes sink. Until the ground is finally level again, it will be necessary to continue applying something like sand to keep leveling this dangerous areas that have sunk from the gophers tunneling. It will be an ongoing hazard for some time in the future. I would like it on record for all the members of the board to have full knowledge that at least once a year, the Corcoran Cemetery goes unkept. That is until we make our voices heard through a site on Facebook called We Lived in Corcoran Before the Inmates. This year, the Corcoran Journal got involved printing a front page article. The conditions of the Corcoran Cemetery have been so bad, we have over seventeen immediate family members and thirty extended family members. When my aunt died recently, the family chose not to bury her in her plot next to her parents and her brother, going against her own wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, uh, ma'am, did you apply for the, uh, appointment to the Corcoran Cemetery District Board of Trustees?
No, I do not live in the district.
Okay.
If I'd like to make an exception, I would be more than happy to.
Okay, just want to make sure you know we had two people. Uh, one of us, which at, at our meeting a couple of weeks ago that morning, Cemetery District's applied. So there's going to be two people appointed to that, um, board today. And so hopefully that helps out.
I would be more than happy. I was born in Corcoran. I lived in Corcoran until third grade. If you'd make an exception, I'd be more than happy to apply. I'm more than qualified.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your comment. I'm clerk.
The next speaker is Kevin Cook.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, sir.
My name's Kevin Cook. I'm Deputy DA in the county. Been here for seventeen years. I'm here speaking today because I'm concerned about public safety. I want to ensure that everybody's aware that the District Attorney's Office, in about a month, will be fifty percent down on our attorneys. In my opinion, that's a situation that makes us ineffective. It's hard to do our job with that limited number. And Ms. Hacker's doing everything she can. She's working on resolutions. She's trying to come up with plans to fix that problem. She's in a difficult situation right now. The recent proposal that is being proposed is to hire two out-of-state attorneys, um, part-time, working remotely, paying them a hundred and a hundred and ninety dollars an hour. The attorneys have met as it relates to this proposal, and we are in opposition, believing that that number is just unreasonable. It's just way too high. The attorneys based on that number, they feel like they're being slapped in the face, and to them, it's insulting. There's attorneys that are still here. If the board decides to approve this recent proposal, I believe that there will be several more attorneys that leave the office, creating a situation where we won't be able to function effectively as a District Attorney's Office. We believe that it would be better suited that if the board were inclined to grant this much money for these individuals, that that would be used to adjust the salaries as it relates to the attorneys, hopefully so we can retain some of the attorneys that we already have. In addition to that, the numbers would hopefully entice other attorneys to be willing to come to our county. At this point, we're in dire straits, and we do need more people. Thank you.
Sir, are you speaking on behalf, on behalf of the Prosecutors Association?
You're on act. I'm sorry. I'm actually not part of that union, but I'm the most senior deputy in this office. And we did have a discussion just today, and they asked me to come and speak to the board.
They, uh, members of the association?
Yeah, they all agree on the safety, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment.
That's all the speaker cards that I have. No one online seems to have their hand raised.
Anybody else in the chambers unscheduled? Come on, we have plenty of time. Take your time.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Rachel Clement. I'm the new, uh, Tulare Kings County Field Representative for Congressman David Valadeo. For those of you who are familiar with Clayton Smith, I'm taking over his position. So really excited to get to work with you guys. I'm sure you'll be seeing and hearing from me, um, you know, in the future quite soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome. Anybody else? All right, we'll move forward, uh, to the consent calendar. Uh, actually, um, back up to approval of the minutes. Item A, report out of closed session from the regular meeting for July 18th, 2023. Counsel, you got anything?
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion.
I move second.
Motion by Fagundes, second by Verboon. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Abstain.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes four in favor, one abstention. Item B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for July 18th, 2023. Motion by Fagundes, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Abstain.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes, uh, four in favor, one abstention. That takes us to the consent calendar. We have two items. If the board has not any, uh, questions or comments, Chair will entertain a motion.
I move presented.
Dev seconds.
Motion by Verboon, second by Nevs. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Takes us to regular agenda items. First item, item A comes from the DA's office. It's the DA here, the sheriff, it would be presented. All right. Morning. Morning to both of you.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here today. Uh, gentlemen, I, I come here in absolute celebration and wanting to recognize the hard work of law enforcement agencies that came together and conducted Operation Moving Out. Um, this was an operation that had developed in several years ago when law enforcement had noticed that there was a rise in Crip criminal street gang activity. Um, they started to develop a case, build it, and they appealed to the Department of Justice to assist them in a wiretap investigation. Um, there were several agencies that came together, the California Department of Justice, the California Highway Patrol, the Kings County Sheriff's Department, the Kings County District Attorney's Office, Hanford Police Department, and, um, am I missing anybody? Lamore Police Department. Um, and it all culminated into hard work, several months of overtime, non-stop, uh, wire interceptions. We were able to solve three unsolved homicides, and on takedown day, we took down sixty-two Crip criminal street gang members, um, Norteno gang members and their associates. And I want to take this opportunity to inform the board about this wonderful, um, operation and to, um, ask you to recognize their efforts and their success. Um, today, we have some of the members of the moving out operation. If you can raise your hand in the back. Everybody wants to raise their hand. Don't be shy. It's all right. Uh, and we have certificates to present.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. Uh, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff, good to see you all again. Um, it's a special moment when we can recognize, you know, employees from not only our own, um, agencies, but other agencies as well. We have, um, the fortunate to have a great relationship with the Department of Justice Fresno office. Uh, Rachel Capello standing in the back there with the black and blue on, and Rachel and I started our careers together here at the, at the county. Um, and she moved on to the Department of Justice and has worked her way up into the supervisory role of the Fresno office. So she runs the Fresno region. And so when cases like this come along and we're able to reach out to Rachel and get their assistance, it just takes it to a new level. Um, as you probably all saw in the press conference, uh, a few weeks ago, not only were three homicides solved, but there was about twenty-plus arrests for human trafficking, which is obviously a big problem up and down the state of California and across the nation. Um, the details of this, uh, these cases will come out through some of the preliminary hearings and the trials that are coming forward. And so we won't get into the details, but when you have a case that goes on a wire, um, the role of the sheriff and the role of the district attorney are very involved throughout the investigation. And I can tell you that, uh, it's been a great partnership, and, and we really appreciate the staff that put all the effort into this. And, you know, a lot of times people look to law enforcement, and they see the men and women in the field. But there's so much that goes on behind the scenes, and, uh, just to put cases like this together is very difficult. And so it's a really proud moment, you know, in a department head's career, when you have an opportunity like this, uh, to see a case come together. And, uh, probably like all of you, I know, in, in my case, when I was out in the community and people hear about another gang-related shooting, they ask like, what are you guys doing? You know, and you just kind of bite your tongue, and you're like, just be patient. Investigators are working on this. And then when it finally comes to a head and they do the takedowns and they serve twenty-plus search warrants and sixty-plus arrest warrants, it's a special moment. And, um, it's a very difficult thing to do. The investigators and the support staff were literally working seven days a week for about ninety days, um, with a day off here and there. And, uh, and so at one point I called Carrie and I said, hey, we might be blowing the budget out of the water. And she's like, don't worry about it. This is, this is important. And so it's the support that you get from county administration and the board of supervisors that allows us to do cases like this. So thank you to you all as well, but a special thanks to the, the few that showed up. There's a whole group of them. But obviously, you know, depending on schedules and some of them don't want their faces seen in public, so. Um, but thank you to all of you for everything you did. And, um, it was led by our Commander of CHP, and Scott Goddard was involved for a while before he moved over to vice I office and Rob Brunel now and, and Rachel's team. It's just a fantastic environment when you get to come together like this. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity to recognize them, and, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
She seems to have given the certificate. They don't like their, their, uh, pictures out.
So can we say something?
You can probably understand why. Yeah.
So, you know, it's really cool to see a collaborative effort between our, our agencies, you know? We don't, we don't understand how hard it is to do because of different, uh, egos, you know, uh, different personalities involved. But to see that one common goal, to protect our citizens, is great. I do have a question, though. I mean, I know you guys worked hard on this to get it all done. But it seems like the people that weren't involved, we all knew about it when it started because of social media. They were reporting everywhere of all the, all that was going on. Does that hinder your operation?
Yeah, one hundred percent. And, you know, being a representative of State Sheriff's Association and being in Sacramento a lot, we've introduced bills over and over and over to reduce that impact, and each, each and every time it gets rejected by our legislature. Um, you know, the encrypted technologies that gang members use now, we've, we've tried to pass legislation that would allow law enforcement to see into that encryption, and each and every time it gets rejected. So welcome to California.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for all your effort. I see you can present. Madam Clerk, I mean, Adam VA, I'm the sheriff. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the hard work of men and women, I've been involved in the operation.
The Congressman's office also brought certificates. There you go.
Uh, so my name is Braden Drazaski. I'm interim with Congressman David Valadeo's office. We just want to express how much of an honor it is to be here. Uh, we'd like to present, uh, the certificate, recognition of Kings County Major Task Force for their role in Operation Move It Out. Operation Move It Out, essentially, interrupted illegal activities and came drug sales, human trafficking, money laundering. We honor the Major Task Force dedication for ensuring the safety of all the residents of Kings County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I would also like to present a certificate to the commander, um, at the beginning of the operation, uh, Mr., uh, Goddard?
I think he's on vacation. Get the gophers.
Have a certificate for everybody, but here's a presentation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Just a quick word?
Yes, sir.
This was only a success because of the men and women behind me. They're the ones that were doing the hard work. They were working seven days a week. I had some meetings from time to time and coordinated, but this could have gone on without me. This is not my doing in any way. I appreciate the words from the DA and the sheriff, but the credit goes to the men and women behind me. They made the community safer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Neil, stay up, uh?
Of course.
Yeah, I think you're up next. You have a item, and I believe, um, uh, item one is, uh, being modified to remove, um, Tom Snyder. So this is only regarding, uh, Cindy Underwood. Is that correct?
That is correct. So initially, when I submitted the board agenda item, um, I wanted to recognize both the efforts of Tom Snyder as well as Cindy Underwood. Um, they both work very, very hard, um, early mornings, late nights. Um, my ADA, Tom Snyder, acknowledges the loss of so many deputy district attorneys, and he has graciously stepped down from his position of, uh, administration so that he can serve as a line deputy because that's where it's needed. Um, and I, I do want to publicly acknowledge Tom's, um, selflessness and willingness to do what's best for Kings County, even though that means a pay cut for him. Um, in the interim, uh, Cindy Underwood is going to be taking over the administration of the office. And she is a phenomenal, um, ADA, and, uh, we're lucky to have her, and we should compensate her accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments from the board?
Uh, for no further comment, I move presented.
Motion by Verboon, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
All right, item passes five in favor. We have one more item this morning. Madam DA?
Uh, yes, um, due to the, uh, attrition that has been happening in the office, um, we will be down to approximately fifty percent of the deputy district attorneys that this county needs. Um, my concern with having a, a level of district attorney so low is that, um, we will not be able to file in custody complaints and man or staff all of the courtrooms. Um, as this governing body may know, that Government Code Section 26501, um, legally mandates me to have attorneys appear in court, um, to prosecute cases. Uh, due to the staffing levels, if I have somebody that's sick or in training or on vacation, then I may not be able to staff the courtrooms due to the low amount of staff that I have. Um, I have considered many, many different options with respect to how to raise the staffing levels. I have appealed to this board for more compensation for my deputy district attorneys. I have approached county council and have asked her, um, if there's a way to modify the defense contracts so that the, the contract defense attorneys can assist with the prosecution of cases. I've reached out to the California District Attorneys Association and asked for either, um, any applicants who they may not have picked up to be referred to our county or for any retired annuitants who may want to, uh, work part-time. I've even reached out to the California Public Defender's Office and asked them if there was any retired annuitants that would want to work part-time. The truth of the matter is, is that there is very few attorneys out there looking for jobs. Um, applications in law schools are down, um, radically. In fact, the, uh, San Joaquin College of Law, their applications are down twenty-five percent this year. In addition to that, in order to become an attorney, you have to pass the California State Bar. The bar is offered twice a year. This last test in February, only one in three people passed the bar. Um, so we have a huge amount of attrition in the legal community with people retiring, um, and not enough people replacing them. In addition to that, during COVID, a lot of attorneys had sought out remote work or teleworking. And many of them are earning good money working from home. And a prosecutor's job is simply not the kind of job that you can do in your pajamas at home. Um, this is a job where you have to get up, go to court, and advocate for this county and its safety. Um, and we don't, there's not enough applicants. Um, so in light of this, while I do agree that an hourly rate of a hundred and ninety dollars is very high, um, this was the only applicant, applicant I could find, or independent contractor I could find that could willingly commit to working four hours every single day to assist us with our in-custody filings so that I could dedicate each and every one of our full-time employees to court. Is there any questions from the board?
Um, before, before we open that up, let me ask you this, and I do appreciate the heads up, uh, um, on this item coming up, especially coming off vacation. Appreciate the phone call and, 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 um, let me know that, uh, this was something that was going to take place today. Um, that being said, in light of, um, some communication between you and your, and, and your prosecutors and some comments at the podium, um, would you like to table this for a week and maybe go back and talk with your prosecutors and see if you guys could work something else? Maybe we have a unified approach to this. It's up to you.
Well, I, Chairman, I appreciate your offer to allow me to give me an opportunity to speak more deeply with my prosecutors. Um, each and every one of them works extremely hard, and I don't want to undercut them or to make them feel like their contribution to our office is not valuable. Um, that's certainly not the, the, the goal I'm trying to reach here. Um, I would ju, I would say that I would love the opportunity to table this, talk to them, see if I can find something at a more reasonable rate. But, um, I would like to bring to each and every one of your attention that the compensation that is currently being offered, well, was very generous of this board. And I understand that we are a county that is experiencing a lot of challenges, including massive flooding, um, a natural disaster, um, our, our own economic hardships. But the truth of the matter is, is that when you have, um, such a lack of attorneys looking for jobs, we have to be competitive. And you may be looking, and my guess is, I have, I'm not privy to any of your conversations, but my guess is, is that administration, the county administration has presented to you the compensation rates of other counties in our area, such as Tulare County, Fresno County, Kern County, um, Merced County. And I would say this, every county is undercompensating their attorneys because every county is looking for work. Fresno DA's office is down twenty-five percent. Tulare County is down forty percent. I don't know what Kern County is, but I know that they're down because their elected is going into court and doing jury trials. Um, and so if this board is relying on what other counties are doing, that's going to be insufficient because other counties are also deeply understaffed, although not as understaffed as ours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, a, a quick question. So, you know, we authorize, we needed something done. We don't have enough prosecutors. We have plenty of, uh, public defenders, not enough prosecutors. And, uh, this will alleviate, help your staff get these cases filed, right?
Yes.
And help them get their job done too, as well, right?
Yes, so, um, Mr. Walpole, in particular, was a retired ADA out of Contra Costa County. Um, he's done homicides, gangs, sexual assault cases. And the thought process behind him was to have him do the in-custody, uh, filings. And in addition to that, he would be of an assistance to our prosecutors if they had questions about their cases or needed somebody to bounce ideas off of. In addition to that, he's also availed himself to local law enforcement if they wanted some direction on how to do like complex criminal investigations.
How long is his contract?
His contract is up to a year, but it can be counseled, um, with thirty days' notice.
So if he's not working up to standard, we can let him go?
Yes. Yes.
And so, you know, nothing against the staff now. They're all worked. They're, they're a little stressed out. Was this, is any way could they have applied for this job, could do like a overtime to get this done, or they're just already maxed out?
Like, uh, is the question, can the county pay?
I, I, I mean, all I know, understand is everybody's working to their max, uh, their case overload is, is out of control. This has been going on for years, not just with you or the last DA, but even with the DA before and the DA before that. Uh, we've never had enough staff. They've never been prepared. I went in court and watched them, and they're young attorneys coming in with a pile of paper like that, and they're having to go through them and, and defend the victims by prosecuting the, the criminals. And we've never had an advantage. So I understand that. And this is, if this is a new way, within, just within a year, we might be able to get a hold of it. And, and no way are we trying to offend any of the prosecutors that are here today. We just want to get a handle on it, get moving on. We have a lot of criminals in jail now that need to be prosecuted.
Yes.
We don't have enough personnel to get that done. So I don't want anybody to feel that we're trying to offend anybody by not showing them their respect. We're going to find more money to give, give to your personnel now with some retention and some recruitment money. But, uh, we need to make some choices today, and this is, this is the way to do it. So.
Yes.
It is a lot of money. Um, everything's cost a lot of money nowadays, but it's a temporary contract. Hopefully, we can get a handle on it, get up on top of it, where we can have new personnel come in. But if no one graduated from law school, we may have a bigger problem.
Yes, and it's a concerning problem, but I would also make some additional recommendations. Like, we need to be more aggressive with our recruitment. Um, I've been devoting a lot of my time to try and find anybody. Um, and I've told you about the efforts that I have taken. But we really need to be aggressive about hiring a recruiter, like now. Um, because August is going to come, and we're going to lose another two attorneys to Riverside County. Um, but I, I keep, I keep contacting, um, people, and, um, there's, there's just a delay. And we need, we need to get on top of this. In fact, I hired a recruiter this week out of my own budget um, because we, we need this now. Um, and in fact, I would even, I would even offer to you guys and to this board, um, we could, we could freeze attorney positions and redistribute that budget money to our current staff. um, we could, we could freeze attorney positions and redistribute that budget money to the, our current staff. Um, in, in effort to compensate them for the extra work that they've done. Um, but I've, I've been informed that, um, that, that may not be something that the board would be interested in. Um, but I, I think that we all need to be creative and, um, take an aggressive approach to this.
Well, this, if this worked, if we do approve this, you'll know within thirty or sixty days whether it works or not, right?
Right.
I just wanna make sure the staff understand that we're just trying to get through the hurdles. I know we work, we work with nine other counties here at the Central Valley, and every, every county's having the same problem.
Yes.
And even over in the other coastal communities, same thing. Nobody wants to work.
Yes.
And not just in, in, in public defense, uh, but everywhere. It's hard to get any kind of good personnel, so.
Yes. And I appreciate this board, you, you, all of you have been very receptive to the messages that I've been conveying to you. And I appreciate your interest and your, um, passion for making sure that Kings County remains safe. And I know that this board puts safety at the top of the list. And I appreciate that and, and thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam DA. Uh, uh, Ms. Martinez, uh, two, um, budget units, what are they? I see the numbers, but where would the four hundred and thirty-five thousand come from?
It would come out of the D- District Attorney's budget.
This is money that's already budgeted.
Correct. So what she's relying on is the salary savings and, um, compensating them through her budget.
Yes.
There's no addition to her budget.
Okay, so what you were just talking about as far as, um, funded positions in your budget, but you don't have a body there. You're proposing use that money to got a contract, right? First.
Yes.
The other option that you just said, that you'd like to use those funds to compensate your existing prosecutors.
Personally, I, what I think is best for the county is if we took the, the salary savings that have been allocated to my budget, freeze them and devote them to the staff, the full-time employees that I have. Um, that, that is my first choice. Because if I can provide compensation for them, then they're less inclined to leave. And they're, uh, I can, I can be competitive with other counties with recruiting new attorneys.
Would that number be the same, the four hundred and thirty-five thousand?
I would need to sit down with Mr. Boyet and really work out, uh, the numbers. Um, and that maybe that's another reason why we need to table this, uh, proposal. But I would rather use this money for the staff that I have and the staff that I can get to work here full-time, rather than spend it on an independent contractor that's only temporary.
Would the board, uh, have that appetite for, to bring back two scenarios next week? Uh, the one that's being discussed right now, the option of, um, spreading the money to the current prosecutors and then bringing back this option, and then the board asks two choices?
I do have a question for Ms. Hacker.
Yes.
You know, the suggestion that you're making would increase the, so you're basically saying that no adding, no additional positions, but front-loading the work to your current staff and compensating them more. But you're also sa- stating that your district attorneys are overworked.
They are.
So the issue of, um, the workload is not gonna be fixed by compensating them more.
The issue of the workload will be fixed by compensating them more because they're gonna be less inclined to leave. And I would be able to have more of an advantage or more of an edge in recruiting more people. Um, if you look at our numbers compared to Tulare and Fresno, they're close, but we're still lower than everybody else. And to be honest and frank with you, if we're going to staff our, our district attorney's office, we need to be better than these other counties. Um, because people are going to have to travel to Hanford to get here and to work. Um, in addition to that, an attorney who is looking for a job could apply to Fresno, Tulare and to our office. But when they see that our office is down fifty percent, they know that they're gonna go into a situation where they're gonna be working extremely hard and maybe not as hard as Fresno County. Um, and, and that's why I think that we need to be better than these other counties.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, my job is just, I don't wanna divide the, the workforce we have today. Uh, I just want them to understand that if, if we do decide to do this, it helps them do their job better and less stressed. I would assume. I'm not a, I'm not an attorney and I'm not in an office, but, uh, you know, we protect the victim of crimes first. And it seems like it is switched on us. We protect the criminals, not the victims, so.
Sue Robinson?
Carolyn, did you have something?
Yes, if I may, um, Carolyn Lee, Human Resources Director. I'd just like to remind, um, everyone as well that we have a coffin associates, uh, survey that we are doing. A lot of what's being discussed here would be meet and confer for us to have discussions with the association in terms of any kind of monetary. But we also do have some countywide issues as well that we're looking through, through the retention and recruitment process through the advisory committee, which we've been continuing to bring to the board. Um, we do have meetings scheduled. Um, I've been off for a week, so I apologize. We haven't met while I was out. Um, but we are back and we will be back with the committee to talk about those issues across the board that are affected, not just in the Prosecution Association, but countywide.
No, thank you, uh, for reminding us of that. And of course, that's why I was just asking to see if, uh, the board had the appetite to give direction for the DA to go and have those discussions there. And then that way the prosecutors, association is listening, and the gentleman in the back, um, then have an opportunity to communicate, um, and, and get that ball rolling. If not, then the decision is either to table today's item or move forward and see where the board wants to go with it. Sue Robinson?
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, I would like to, I would like to see a table, only because I would like to see additional dialogue so that we can maintain good relations with, with our current staff. And whether that decision is, is to take the step forward and do a temporary Band-Aid bridge fix, if you will, uh, or, or to do the compensation feature that you're talking about. Or maybe even possibly splitting the difference. I, but that could all come up in, in the dialogue between the, the parties. So I, I, I appreciate, uh, all your efforts in this and, uh, I, I, I'd like to see it come back after, after we've had a, a real chance to discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I noticed both contracts have different, um, uh, hourly rates of compensation. Uh, do you have the same remarks about the second contract with the, uh?
Ms. Smith?
Correct.
So the different rates of compensation are for various reasons. One is Mr. Walpole has twenty-plus years of experience as a prosecutor and had retired as an assistant district attorney, which was very high up in Contra Costa County.
Correct.
Uh, Ms. Denson or Ms. Smith, um, was a deputy district attorney in Tulare County and has six years of experience. So there's a difference in experience levels. In addition to that, uh, Mr. Walpole was able to commit to four hours per day, every day. Um, Ms. Smith is full-time employed remotely through a nonprofit organization, and she would be working here and there, probably weekends, nights and mornings. Um, and so her, she would not be working consistently like Mr. Walpole would be.
Correct. But which, which job performance or which job description needs to be filled more rapidly if you could triage those two different, um, positions?
We need somebody to file in custody so that I can free up bodies to go to court. So Mr. Walpole's.
A hundred and ninety versus the a hundred dollars and all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so, uh, is it to, uh, table this a week?
Yeah, let's move and table this, and then we'll have a little more discussion and come back with a little better scenario. Like I said, we don't wanna divide your staff you have now. We don't need anybody else leaving. Let's see if we can find a, a spot where everybody's happy.
Thank you, and I appreciate this board for having a candid and frank discussion. I think that we're all, um, we're all on the same page because we all wanna make Kings County safe. And, uh, we just need to, to figure out a plan. And I appreciate this board listening to the, the various suggestions and, um, being open to doing what's necessary.
Madam DA, I will, I will say this, that, um, you know, I've been here this year fifteen, and so I, I do have a history of working with associations, unions. I very much appreciate those, uh, discussions with rank and file. But that being said, my other side of the record is, when the sheriff comes to the podium, our fellow elected officials like you, the sheriff, I've always said this, if the sheriff comes and it's his budget and he's, and he's saying, this is what I need, and it's on our agenda to accomplish his mission, then who am I to say no to that? And I don't wanna treat you the same either. You're coming here. Now I'd learn that you're within your budget. And so if you're coming and saying, this is what I need to accomplish the mission, then who am I to say no? I do appreciate you, um, saying as well that your first priority would be to work with your current prosecutors on there too. So I'm in agreement to table this too and, and, um, see where we're at on there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Any else? Okay. So we have a motion by Verboon to table. We have a second. Second by Robinson, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. See you next week.
Thank you. See you next week.
All right. Good morning, sir. Good morning, Dominic.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dominic Tiberowski, Public Works Department. Um, before your board this morning to request chairman to sign the notice of completion, uh, so staff may finalize the project and start the clock, uh, towards release of retention for the SB eighty-one juvenile center remodel project. On May twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-one, your board authorized awarding of the project to Bowie Contractors Incorporated in the amount of sixteen million, five hundred, twenty thousand dollars. The final total construction cost, including change orders at this point, is seventeen million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars excluding the finding, uh, final remaining uh, out-of-scope items as defined by the state fire marshal. And I'm sure you are aware of those issues. The, uh, primary contractor and secondary contractors have all completed their items of work as within the original scope. Um, however, during final inspection by the state fire marshal, they've identified a number of items that need to be uh, changed and or corrected before the facility can be open, uh, for, for use. Uh, we are working with Banner and, uh, Bowie to, uh, put together a cost for those items. And I would anticipate bringing that before your board at, at some point in the near future, uh, with the expectation that we'd be able to open the facility by the end of this calendar year. Uh, now that is separate from the item before you today. Again, this is the notice of completion for the, uh, original contract and subsequent change orders, um, the scope of which has been completed, uh, by Bowie. So, um, the, uh, project, as you know, included remodeling of the existing vacant branch jail in order to repurpose it as the branch juvenile detention facility and the addition of modular classrooms and a reporting center. Uh, construction of the facility began July twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-one and was completed on June twenty-sixth of this year. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a quick comment on this. This is the notice of completion for the project. However, there is some issues with that project currently that we're dealing with the state fire marshal. So how, although there is a notice of completion, we still need to work with the state fire marshal because they did have some findings. And so at this time, we're not gonna move in the juvenile, um, uh, to, into the facility.
Is there, is there a way to the end on that with fire marshal? Do you think we can resolve the issues?
By doing their change order list, yes. There, there, there's really no pushback, unfortunately. So they, they did, uh, review and approve the plans, um, as designed. However, when they came out to do their final inspection, uh, they found a number of items that, uh, were not to their satisfaction. Unfortunately, they, they, uh, do get a second bite at the apple. So there's not much we can do.
Yes, sir. Sue Robinson.
So are these items pretty, well, I guess the first question is, normally, would the, uh, contractor have to take care of these problems and are these co- problems costly? So if we sign up now and we have to pay for it later, are these just nominal and we just wanna move this along quickly or?
So we, we are in the process of getting, uh, cost estimates. Uh, I don't think it's gonna be nominal. It's gonna be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, unfortunately, we cannot require this contractor to do it because, you know, as I stated, the, uh, plans were approved without these items. And that's what was bid on and, and that was, uh, those are the contract documents. So, um, you know, they have, we have had, uh, discussions with them. Our expectation is that they will, uh, perform these items of work for us. Um, but it will be essentially outside of scope.
Mr. Chairman, uh, once you sign this notice of completion, that, that starts the clock for one-year warranty? Violate any of those warranties that are, um, in place from the existing contract?
It shouldn't. Uh, you know, our plan at this point is to use the same contractor to do these additional items. Um, you, you know, I suppose the only downside, you're correct, it does start, start the clock for the warranty. Uh, we're not gonna move in to, until towards the end of the year.
Correct.
And so, you know, we will lose, uh, some of that, you know, valuable time, which is when you would expect, you know, warranty items to appear. But unfortunately, given, given the circumstance, it's, um, we did talk about moving, uh, the kids partially into the facility, but, uh, probation department felt that that wasn't a good idea. So we, we, uh, tabled that.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that'd be a good idea either, but I was wondering if there was a way to extend the warranty. Should, should we find something, uh, either through the subsequent, um, changes, uh, do the change orders or later on? So if there's a way to extend that warranty period?
We could certainly negotiate that.
Yeah. It would be through negotiation with the subsequent with the change order.
Now, there may be a cost associated with that. Um, again, it just really depends on the contractor because they would be taking on some additional risk.
And would you be in a better position with the notice of completion in hand or with the notice of completion paid?
Well, there, there's really nothing that, um, allows us to not move forward with this notice of completion. They've completed their work. Um, so, you know, withstanding, um, advice from counsel, I don't know that there's anything that, um, gives us the authority to withhold this. They, they've completed their obligation. Uh, on the other hand, withholding this, uh, then dominoes into withholding the retention, which is significant. It's, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, that could cause the contractor to back out and no longer be willing to assist us in, uh, completing these out-of-scope items.
Seems like a contractor on a warranty, uh, on the completion of the, uh, change orders as well, on the time of completion, because that might be two, three months. So we'll get that pushed out too, so.
The additional work, yes.
It might be five or six months if they're talking calendar year.
Yeah.
It is, it is California.
Correct.
Uh, I'll make a motion as, uh, presented and discussed and promptly get the, uh, warranty start date pushed out at the end of total completion. Nev seconds.
Most of our Verboon. Second by Nevs. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboon? Rusty Robinson? Richard Fagundes?
Yes. I'd have to pass five a favor. Thanks, sir. You did good work. Thank you. Okay, next up, uh, morning, Ms. Boyet. We have two items to consider here.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Matthew Boyet, Kings County Administration. Um, before your board this morning, uh, to go over the, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three grand jury report regarding the Corcoran Cemetery District. So the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two grand jury, um, did an initial investigation on the district based on, um, a list of complaints, uh, regarding the grounds and the condition of some of the, uh, decorations and, uh, um, sunken headstones that are gathering water there at the cemetery. So, um, in that initial report from twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, they noticed that most of the grassy areas and some of the grounds were in satisfactory condition. Um, but, uh, that they did, uh, notice some of the sunken headstones and they, uh, recognized that those do need to be raised. Um, they cause, you know, tripping hazards for guests. And, um, they also, um, identified several plain and un-uniform markers that had been damaged, um, that remain, uh, that remain damaged. And so, um, and also that there was no kind of, you know, public website for, uh, information and, uh, access to information, things like that. And so with that, they came up with several recommendations in that initial report, um, to continue to, uh, you know, keep the grounds in a satisfactory condition, um, which would include frequent cleaning of, uh, decorations and spent flowers and things of that nature. So, um, they also would have liked to see a professional brochure about, um, different policies and procedures, as well as they would like to see, uh, those sunken headstones raised and, as well as some of those, uh, un-uniform and plain damaged markers, uh, replaced. Um, and so with that, the current grand jury did a follow-up investigation on that initial report to see the progress made by the district. And so in the findings of the report before your board this morning, um, they did notice that large parts of the grassy areas have started to brown over. Um, although they did realize that that is, uh, consistent with the extreme heat we've been having and the drought conditions at the time of the investigation. Um, they did notice that about sixty-nine headstones, um, that were previously, that had previously sunk, those had been raised. And that, uh, the groundskeepers have been continuing to raise as many as possible. Um, although they still noticed that, uh, you know, there were still several damaged, uh, you know, plain non-uniform markers out there. Um, and although there wasn't any, uh, old flags and, uh, spent flowers just strewn about the entire grounds, they did notice several, um, areas where, uh, decorations and flowers, uh, had kind of spilled into the grassy areas and not kept within the confines of the, um, uh, headstones accordingly. So, with that, um, as one last finding, they, they still didn't see any, um, professional brochure that had, uh, policies and procedures and things like that, although they did, uh, notice that the district now has a website. So, um, the current report did have some recommendations to continue to, uh, monitor the watering schedules there to ensure that the grass doesn't completely die off there. Um, given the, uh, you know, given the extreme heat and stuff like that. And so, um, although they had raised sixty-nine headstones, they want the, they have a recommendation to, uh, continue to see as many raised as possible, um, as well as try to find ways to fund the replacement of those non-uniform and, uh, plain and damaged headstones for the needy families. Um, and then, uh, kind of create a professional brochure that, uh, the families and the public can access that kind of outline, uh, decoration policies in regards to keeping decorations inside the confines of the headstones and not have things spill over to the grassy areas, which, uh, makes it difficult to mow and maintain the yard accordingly. So, um, with that, so the Corcoran Cemetery District is a special district and they operate outside of the jurisdiction and authority of your board and the county. So as such, your board isn't legally required to respond to this report. Um, the, uh, grand jury did list your board as an invited response. So that's to say that you're not legally required to because you don't have jurisdiction there. Um, but, uh, they would, they are inviting a response from your board based on their findings and recommendations. So, um, with that, uh, I'm kind of before your board this morning to seek direction as to how you would wish to respond or if you would wish to respond at all. Um, any response that you wish to have for this report, um, needs to be submitted by August thirteenth. So based on your action and direction this morning, I can bring a formal response back before your board for consideration on August eighth. Um, and then get that submitted on time. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyett.
Was this presented to the Corcoran Cemetery Board?
The report?
Yeah.
They were, uh, they were listed as someone that received a copy of it. I mean, I didn't make a public presentation before their board, uh, but they did receive the report.
The last board meeting, I didn't see any members of the grand jury. They, they correct me if I'm wrong. There you got, you gotta be, well, I didn't see any of you guys at the last, uh, public board meeting. I was there. This lady who spoke, uh, she was there. It's probably about eighteen of us there, but no grand jury, right? Okay. And that's, that's where I'm going with this is, uh, you guys can write a letter if you want, but, um, uh, you know, the, the frustration here is that, um, I keep seeing these grand jury reports and they're not aware of the action that we've taken. They're here, they're here in the audience. Um, but the people, the people of Corcoran already know that the board of supervisors stepped in to help. The people of Corcoran already know, uh, well in advance, um, uh, that the board has cared. Um, the headstones, the headstones aren't happening because of grand jury. So it's, it's rewriting history for hard work that we've done already. We, uh, we, we, we learned of the issue, um, through the pandemic that all the cemeteries, not just Corcoran, all the cemeteries were having an issue because of an overload of, um, higher than average burials each month. And in the case of Corcoran, the limited amount of employees, that, um, these burials, they take priority over landscaping. Therefore impacts to the landscape, um, there were hits and it, and it didn't look good. And, um, uh, I agree that, uh, you know, it, the, it, it's, it wasn't a good sight. It's a place where our loved ones are buried. We all have them. Um, and we want to see the place look nice. Uh, that being said, the board, we came back, we took action, we put up some money. I think we gave every cemetery district a hundred thousand dollars, right? Prior to that, our own county, uh, Parks and Recreation staff gave up their own s- only day off in the middle of park season. They gave up their Saturday. They came to Corcoran. I know because I met him at six in the morning. All right? So anyone who's posted, yeah, it was. It's a lot harder than just complaining on Facebook. All right? I got there. We worked all day. It was a hot day. It was our staff who set, who outlined the headstones and sat down and talked to the manager and told him, this is what you need to do. And it's costly. Matter of fact, uh, uh, one of our, uh, Parks and Recs, I'm trying to remember his name. He might be in the audience. Uh, he actually, he worked for the Hanford Cemetery District prior to coming to the county. And he was very helpful that day. And he was very knowledgeable. And he told them, hey, look, on a good day, you could raise, um, two headstones. But you're probably going to get about one headstone raised a day. It's very, uh, labor intensive and it costs a lot of money. That was one of the reasons why when we came here about the hundred thousand dollars, we talked about, look, where would the money make an impact to? It could help them to raise. So when you see, um, the sixty-five to sixty-nine headstones raised, which was reported out by the general manager at the last meeting that I was at last month, uh, with some members of the community. Um, that's, that's, that's because, that's because of our work on there. Okay. So I don't know how you want to respond to the grand jury and say, well, thank you for putting in a report, but yes, we were aware and yes, our work and our money and our actions helped raise those. Um, when you go back to, uh, uh, the grass, you know, the, um, the last level of complaints on, on, um, a certain, uh, Facebook website, um, came on Memorial Day weekend. Okay? So I go out to the cemetery. I see that there's dry grass. I leave there. I drive it to Larry Cemetery, same day, an hour later. Looked exactly like Corcoran. Why? Because you got winter grass, you're transitioning in the warmer area, the winter grass seed died. The planting of the new seed had just taken place and needs to be irrigated. So then you go out there now and now it's green. Okay? So, but for some reason, people like to focus, um, on the cemetery, but they're not paying attention to the work that's already being done. So it's frustrating. Here's why. One, um, when I start getting tagged on a certain Facebook website and I'm seeing, um, insulting comments, not to me only, but to the board, the hundred thousand dollars that we gave and presented, they're sitting on their post and then saying that, who stole the money? Where'd the hundred thousand go? And then go to the cemetery because look at the way the cemetery works. That's very insulting to me. And because I know the board worked hard, they didn't have to give that money, but they did. Okay? There's a, there's a lot going on here. So again, I don't care if you send the letter or not, means nothing to me. But I do want to thank the board of supervisors, uh, for the, the work and the care, not only cemetery and Corcoran, but throughout the district. Lastly, um, two people that were at the meeting, um, uh, and, and, and so we had like eighteen people at the meeting last month. I asked, who here is here because of Facebook posts? There's like three people that raised their hands. There's people that came, um, because they read a Corcoran Journal story and they heard that there was an issue going on. And two of those people are putting their money where their mouth is. And when they got appointed this morning, I talked to them. I told them, hey, look, any one of you could get appointed to the board. And I do believe that the Corcoran Cemetery needs a stronger board and that a stronger board who pays more attention to the general manager and his employees. It's their job to direct them. We have no jurisdiction. I can't drive home right now and say, um, someone turn on the water right here. Can't do that. None of us can. Okay? But we gave them money. The money's being accounted. I directed them, um, to put that money in a single budget unit. Um, they have accountants just like we do. And I directed them that when the time comes, I'm going to ask for a report of the hundred thousand so I can come back and show the board members where every penny went. Now, we're not asking any other cemetery to do that, but I understand that there's concerns of my constituents on the Corcoran Cemetery and I'm, and I'm there with them on that. I was at the meeting. I gave it time and continue to do so. So that, however you want to do it, if you're going to write something, you're going to, I'm going to make sure that it's correct. But when I can rewrite history, we're doing the work here. See, Robinson.
I just have a comment on, you know, landscaping in the Central Valley. So I take pride in my yard. I work on my yard every day, at least five minutes to an hour. Uh, we're not always in control. Uh, I had a garden tour back in two thousand and seventeen. My yard was perfect. I got up at five o'clock in the morning, went out there, made sure everything nice. One of my beautiful plants was sitting there dying. A freaking gopher came and ate the roots off that, that morning. I had no control. And there are times that I can keep the gophers under control or there's times I cannot keep the gophers under control. This year, the gophers are out of control because it's so wet. Also, we have, our quality of our water has diminished over time because now we have more sediment in our, in our groundwater. And it's plugging up a lot of our sprinklers and our, and our stuff like that. I don't know if that's from Corcoran. I know we had issues. I thought we resolved those issues. I'm not really sure why Cork, uh, the grand jury down there, uh, doing this report after we've already made corrective actions. It just seems like it's kind of a little bit late. It's like, you know, arguing with your wife and then you, you set the rules or she sets the rules and you go and say, yeah, yeah, I got to get that done, you know? We already made corrective actions here, sick, beginning of the year or last year.
Last year.
Yeah. So it seems like a little bit, uh, waste of time. So, sir, Robinson.
That's true.
So, yeah, so the efforts that, that have been made out, out Corcoran Cemetery, I'm very appreciative for. Uh, the, uh, just a, a couple of things. I went to check the website to see if they had one. As you said, they, they have one. It's, it's a nice website. Uh, I, I would just suggest that I didn't see where their, their board of directors was on that. Uh, and, and, uh, at Hanford Cemetery, they posted in the front too, uh, their board of directors. So a lot of this, you know, unfortunately, you're having to field a lot of these questions. The, the board should be fielding those questions, but the, but the people should know who the board is and when the meeting is. When I looked on that website, I didn't see when the next date of their meeting was. I saw where the last date of the last meeting was. And so, um, would be helpful for them to know so they could voice their concerns when, when they wanted to. Uh, and so, um, another, another feature at the Hanford Cemetery, well, back to Corcoran, Corcoran says, we're, we're going to clean the cemeteries a couple of times a year. Well, that's great, but it's kind of ambiguous. It doesn't say when they're actually going to do it. If you go to Hanford Cemetery, I have a picture of it right here, but, but it's actually posted. It shows what day they're going to do it. That's important, you know? Just recently, my family went out there. We put a lot of flowers out there. It's a little costly these days. You'd be kind of upset, but then you went back out there and it was all thrown away. But if you actually know the date, so I think the date at Hanford Cemetery is next Monday. So we got to get out there and go get the flowers, pick them up and put them back after the, after the cleaning. But, but I can only do that because I know the date. I didn't see the date on it. May- maybe I missed. But, but if I didn't, seems like something that could be helpful to put in there. So.
You want to do that in a response?
Sorry?
You want to do that in a response to the grand jury?
I mean, yeah, I, I, you know, if, if we, uh, have an appetite for a response, I think that's, that's an appropriate response to have. I, what, what are your thoughts? You fill these questions all the time.
I can tell you that the meeting was about a two and a half hour meeting last month. It was a good two-way conversation. Everyone in the room got to speak, um, and the, and the general manager took note of concerns and one of which was highlighting, um, the meetings and letting people know, uh, when the meetings are. We only had, I think, two trustees there that day, Ness Hansen, uh, Jeanette Todd. I don't even know how they went forward without a quorum, but, but, uh, so I think we just turned into like a town hall and, and people sat down and talked. So things are, things are taking place there. I don't see any reason to micromanage, uh, micromanage them. I'm very happy about the two appointments. These are people, these are, um, um, these are older folks who really care and, and that, that are going to be there. And, uh, and we're, again, we're at the meeting and, and, um, have a very, uh, good interest in serving on this, on this board. I'd like to give them time to see a little change, but, um, is a cemetery perfect? No. Did it look better? Yes. Um, even our, our parks people who I would dare to say experts in landscaping and got degrees, they said the day last year, Richard, don't expect to see anything for about eighteen months to two years on a real change of landscape. It doesn't happen overnight. You know, the chemicals, the, uh, the feeding, the things that, that, that ground is going to have to go through to really pot. And that, and that time hasn't come yet. That time hasn't come yet. And, and the community also, uh, my neighbor, his, uh, his name is, uh, I'll just say his first name, Dwayne. He's, he's a former firefighter and, uh, former barber in Corcoran. Everyone loves him. And he spent time managing the Corcoran Cemetery District. When he was there, it was like a golf course. He could putt on it. That's Dwayne. No one's ever going to be able to touch him. His yard is immaculate. He's out there mowing it once a week and his grass is like this tall at his house. And, um, you're never going to touch that level. Okay? It's not, it's not going to get there. But I don't see any major difference between Corcoran and the other cemeteries on what they're going through. And those headstones are getting raised and, and it does look better. Um, the board, I don't think we're going to put out money to buy people's headstones. You know, like the grand jury is asking for it. I don't think that's, that's our issue there to do that. Some families don't even put a marker on their loved ones, so they can't afford it. But you know, who are we to come in and spend money and, 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 and put some markers there on it. But I want people to understand that if anything, the board of supervisors is doing a lot. I mean, when the, when, um, some of the comments I saw on the Facebook post was, oh, they got money to build a veterans memorial, but they can't, uh, you take care of the cemetery. It's two different parts of money. I don't understand. So, and then it comes across as insulting to veterans like, you don't appreciate the veterans memorial? Come on. And so I'm frustrated with the issue. I'm over the issue. I'm done with it. Um, I'm somebody who's out there. I put sweat. I was out there with the, with the weed blower. I was out there doing my thing that whole day. We were out there eight hours. And, um, so I care about the cemetery. Uh, both my fathers are out there, my mother, just like everybody else. We think we don't care. We show we care, but putting our money where our mouth is and our own sweat. So thanks again to the county crew, man. And thanks to the board. So I'm, I'm happy just moving forward.
We should probably entertain a vote about whether to, um, uh, do a response or not do a response. It is the board's discretion. It's, uh, not mandatory.
I don't care either way. Whatever the board wants to do.
Yeah. Uh, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice to incorporate some of the, um, constructive criticism, I guess, of the website and some of the other observations. I think it would be kind of nice to have, uh, for the record. Um, I think it shows that the board, uh, reviewed the, uh, electronic presence. I, and so I think the constructive side of it was good. But I agree with you, uh, Superior Valley, um, you know, the, the criticism of the rest of the operation is just going to take a little bit more time, unfortunately. Um, and if we want to incorporate that in, that's fine. But, um, I think, I think some of the constructive criticism would probably be warranted in a, in a, what do they call it? An invited response versus a, a required.
I'll make a motion to approve as Rusty and Joe stated.
Nev seconds.
Second. Uh, most of our Verboon, second by Nevs, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Item pass five in favor. You got a second one, brother, for the, uh, finance department. Okay. And yours already has a letter of response, right? We just got to vote to move forward on your response.
Uh, this is a required, uh, response from the grand jury. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Domingo Cruz, one of your administrative analysts in the administrative office. I'm here to, uh, request that your board review the finance department's response to the grand jury report titled Finance Department. And approve the finance department's response as the board's response to the grand jury. So pursuant to section nine, three, three of the California Penal Code, uh, responses to the grand jurors' reports are presented for your board's review and consideration, to review and consideration. So in your agenda packet, there's the, uh, grand jury, uh, report titled, The Finance Department, with a, again, a recommended response. Uh, this response was coordinated with the Director of Finance, uh, Department, and I will read them verbatim for the record. So in the report, the grand jury found three findings. The first one says that just because this type of fraud is common occurrence and the perpetrator was experienced and had stolen from seven other counties, three of which were, uh, which were other municipalities, it should not be acceptable or occurring in the finance department. Uh, the recommendation is ongoing training and auditing or processing. Uh, their recommendation is ongoing training and auditing of processing payments and identifying scams should be made a priority in the finance department. Our proposed response is that we do agree with this finding. Uh, this was not acceptable, acceptable for us either, and it is a top priority for the finance department to ensure any type of fraud is prevented. Just because this has occurred in other counties does not excuse anything. The finance department has implemented new procedures to prevent this type of fraud. So since these procedures have been in place, the department has prevented several other similar fraud attempts. The department will continue to train staff on how to audit transactions and identify fraud. Their second finding is that the Kings County Department heads approved that expenditures of their departments without independent review from the finance department. And their recommendation is that the finance department should have an employee or system in place how to review expenditures, uh, which were previously approved by all department heads. Our proposed response is that we disagree with the findings. The grand jury report states that there are no sufficient procedures in place to review payments and that the finance department does not question a department expenditure unless a complaint is filed. This is not accurate. The department has an extensive review process of all payments and journal entries processed in the county's finance system. It is one of the department's primary functions and responsibility. Since the October two thousand nineteen implementation of the Finance Enterprise Accounting System, all approvals, this are processed through an electronic workflow process. Through this process, a department will enter their transaction into the system. It then goes to their department head or designee who approves the transaction. After the departmental approval, it is received by the finance department for final review and approval. So when the items are reviewed, the department compare it against an internal audit checklist. Some example on the list include making sure that the data entered into the system matches the invoice, that the original invoice number is used and not duplicated. There are no illegal or out of policy charges. The invoice billed to is accounting department's or location. So the checklist was provided to the grand jury on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And their final finding is that the finance department sent out an incorrect ten ninety-nines that were received later than January thirty-fourth, postmarked deadline required by the IRS. So their recommendation that the finance department should continue training and the process of issuing Form ten ninety-nine in the proper timeframe as stated in the IRS titled twenty-six FR one point six zero four one dash six. Our proposed response is that we do agree with this finding. Form ten ninety-nines created by the finance department were all prepared and postmarked on January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. After the years, after they were sent out, it was discovered that some of the amounts and addresses for several grand jury members were incorrect, which resulted in corrected ten ninety-nines forms being mailed after established deadline. Over the past few years, the department experienced turnover in the position that generates the ten ninety-nines. So this has resulted in a few issues like the grand jury have experienced, but the finance department will continue to train the staff on the process of issuing ten ninety-nines and ensure compliance with IRS regulations. So the finance department staff is, is in the chamber. If you have additional questions that I might not be able to answer. With that, I respectfully request that your board uh, review the finance department's response to the grand jury report titled Finance Department and approve the finance department's response as the board's response to the grand jury. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, I do, uh, I did read the, I did, did read the response from the finance department. I appreciate them um, out setting the record straight on some of these issues and especially where they disagree. I mean, grand jury report states that there are no sufficient procedures in place to review payments and that the finance department does not question a department's expenditure unless a complaint is filed. Come on. You think the county's just writing checks all over the place? That is... I'm, I'm, I'm glad the county took the time in this case to respond and, and let the grand jury know, no, this is not true. And so again, but it takes time away from our finance department and it takes time away to respond to something so frivolous on there. We got, we got, we got more important. Our finance department has a whole lot of other hard work uh, to do and more uh, priority matters to deal with. But Sue Robinson, do you have something?
Yeah, just a, a couple of things. I know, uh, that the EFT forms now are no longer available online, but did we change the EFT forms a little bit, just in case there were copies out there floating around?
I'll defer it to the finance guys, the experts.
Yeah, we did modify it, yeah. And uh, made it uh, only available if they reach out and request it and we verify it. Yeah. But they're...
Yeah. And then um, and then with the new system, the new verification system, since we've implemented, I know that we've saved a few things, but have we also discovered any, any problems?
Well, we, we, we discovered people trying to fish, you know, sending us emails with, you know, altered email addresses from our vendors saying they want to change, you know, their banking routing information. And through our processes, you know, we, we contact our vendor and say, are you, are you, is this true? Is this you? And they'll say, no, that's, that's not, we, we haven't changed our banks and, but we've come across a few of those situations where we, where we have stopped this.
And since we, we did that, we haven't had anything slip through?
No. Right.
Thank you.
Good job, Tom.
Job.
I'll move as approved.
Moshe Baraboo.
Deb seconds.
Second by now is Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Baraboo. Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Good work, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take support member announcements. Sue Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, continue to measure the water in the lake, uh, continues to go down. It's not being replenished. Um, special cart meeting was held. Uh, we were anticipated to uh, award the bid for the new transit center. Unfortunately, the low bidder had to re, withdraw the bid due to a, a mistake in the calculations. Um, and so all bids were rejected and uh, we'll readjust the bid package and go out again in September or uh, October. Um, and we anticipate a, a better um, participation in the future. Um, Calviva meeting, uh, finance, as well as the regional health board was held on the twentieth. Um, all reports were approved. The CalAim in the process of identifying and managing the comprehensive needs of whole person uh, care was uh, uh, supported. Uh, managed care, uh, team, uh, to support members, uh, enrolled in Calviva is also uh, uh, in place to better assist in case management across the different uh, programs. You might have a um, consumer that might be in three or four different areas. And so it, uh, it's nice to have a unified um, uh, approach to that. Uh, the HEDIS, which is the Healthcare Effectiveness Data Information Set, uh, measures all of the uh, healthcare uh, programs across the state. Uh, Kings County performs very well in many areas, uh, but was short meeting the goals in some of the immunizations of adults and adolescents and, and lead screening for children and well care visits for uh, child and adolescents. In the past, we've found that that's a record keeping and not necessarily not being performed. Uh, but, and, and we just barely missed it. So uh, we'll um, do some adjusting and, and, and fix that in the future. Four hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and ten thousand souls uh, are uh, enrolled in that program with thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two of them right here in Kings County. Um, the disenrollment started in June, so you, we might see a dip in membership. Um, because it will, uh, they'll leave the program on their anniversary date. So we anticipate that uh, o, over the next year, but uh, membership in the last year has continued to decline. Um, the uh, Cabrillo Scholarship Luncheon was also held on Sunday, uh, awarding graduating uh, high school seniors from the region. Um, and as they plan to uh, attend college, uh, twenty-one of the forty scholarships uh, uh, given out in the state were right here in the San Joaquin Valley and eleven of those uh, uh, presentations were made Sunday, uh, right here in Hanford. Uh, the Kings County Behavioral Health Board, uh, yesterday failed to meet quorum, uh, so no formal action was taken. Uh, but we did go over the uh, eval corp presentation, who evaluates all of the different programs and um, and just kind of reviewed the data with no action taken. Um, and if we can get one or two uh, individuals appointed to that um, advisory board, uh, we have not been able to make forums since January. Um, so it is a little bit difficult uh, in that kind of condition. So if we can look at some of those appointments and some of them, um, if we can go ahead and, and get those done so that advisory board can make um, make the needed uh, discussion um, official in the future. Uh, the Kings County Homeless Collaborative also met yesterday. Um, there were elections of officers. Um, we didn't, I, I don't know if uh, Rosemary wants to give an acceptance speech, but she's the new uh, person in charge. And uh, so it'll be uh, um, moving forward in the future. Um, uh, uh, home-based planning and some of the action uh, plans were discussed and try to get the organization back uh, on track as far as the bylaws. Um, so we'll see how that goes on. Uh, all of the updates on the ongoing programs uh, were discussed as well as the grand jury reports. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sue Nevs. Suroya Fagundes.
It's last week. I had a good week and a bad week. I traveled up north to go uh, friend, very close friend's fiftieth wedding anniversary and in heat, which I didn't want to do. Uh, and then on Wednesday, I came back to uh, another good friend's funeral. And I missed KCEO meeting that Wednesday because I had a, in that, speak of that, which I didn't want to do either, but I did. But with that, it's good and bad. You got to take it all. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thanks, Suroya Fagundes. Suroya Fagundes.
Uh, like Suroya said, in the cart meeting, it was uh, pretty quick. Also Friday had a San Joaquin Valley Joint Powers Association meeting, which is Amtrak. And then Monday, we had a meeting here at the office that we cannot discuss. So, thank you.
Sue, Sue Robinson.
Uh, last, last Tuesday, we all had the opportunity to judge photos. So a lot of talented photographers out there and it was hard to choose. Uh, last Wednesday, spoke to Lieutenant Governor's Office for about forty minutes about flooding, drought, uh, also some of the homeless issues. And then uh, yesterday spoke to Valadeo's office. Uh, Valadeo's staff came out and then we discussed priorities there.
All right. Thank you. Um, just absent last week, I was on vacation, so if I only emails, responses, I'll be doing that back today. Sorry for the delay on, on anything, but it felt good to be away, turn this phone off and uh, come back in a good mood. All right. Thank you.
You're in a good mood?
Sure.
I, yeah, I missed that.
For board correspondence, your board received correspondence dated July twenty-first from the State Water Resources Control Board regarding an order approving temporary change of transfer of water. Your board also received a copy of the order mentioned in that correspondence. For upcoming events, we have a few items. The Kings County Library will be hosting a Free Peanuts Playhouse Show on August first, eleven AM at the Avonale Branch Library and at two thirty PM at the Kettleman City Branch. The event will continue on until August second at the Lamore Civic Auditorium at eleven AM and two thirty at the Stratford Branch Library. There will also be a showing August third at ten AM at the Hanford Civic. There will be a Student Success Resource Fair on Sunday, August sixth, from twelve to three at the Longfield Center located in Hanford. Food, it'll be free food resources for students. The City of Hanford is also hosting a movie in the parks on July twenty-eighth at the Hanford Civic Park at seven PM. City of Avonale is hosting a kids karate class from ages six to thirteen, beginning August twenty-first and continuing on every Monday from six to eight. The cost is fifty-five dollars per month and you can get application at the Avonale City Hall. The Lamore Lions Club will be hosting the annual Brew Fest on August twenty-eighth from five to nine at the Lamore Lions Park. There will be live music.